Roll call please. Mr. Sheehy, here. Mr. Mohin Patel?
He'll be late for about 10 minutes.
All right. Ms. Pang?
She'll be late as well.
Ms. Conway?
Here.
Dr. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Bedoxi?
Here.
Ms. Madikar?
Here.
Ms. White?
She's not going to attend the meeting today. She has a other commitment.
Okay. And Mr. Burrell Patel?
Here. Okay. Opening statement. Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have the last notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 5th, 2021. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. So before I ask Dr. Bragan to go to the administrative reports, we have a new face here. So I'd like to Dr. Bragan to introduce our new interim BA. And then Dr. Bragan has a statement that he wants to read. Dr. Bragan?
Thank you, Board President Sheehy. To my right is Greg Brennan. He comes to us as our interim business administrator. He's going to help us keep the ship afloat until we find a permanent replacement for Dan Michelle. And we're grateful to have somebody of his expertise here. So thank you and welcome, Greg.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan.
Welcome.
And also thank you, Board President Sheehy, for offering me the opportunity to share. Seems like we're getting some feedback here, but no, it's just in my head. All right. To share some information and some positive news. It is with great enthusiasm and excitement that we announced that the Edison Public Schools will provide all of our staff members with COVID-19 vaccines. We have been working with the Edison Office of Emergency Management and especially the OEM Coordinator Andy Toth, our Board of Education, Town Council, and Mayor's Office for some time now on securing COVID-19 vaccines for our teachers and our staff members. Today, we are ecstatic to announce that Hackensack Reading Health, John F. Kennedy Community Hospital, has agreed to work with our school district in getting COVID-19 vaccines for all of our employees. Our school district is being allotted a certain number of vaccines each week, and we hope to completely vaccinate all of our staff members in the next several weeks. We are grateful for everyone's efforts in procuring this opportunity for our school district and school community. This achievement speaks of our local governments and health systems' power when we work together toward a common goal. The logistics for disseminating the vaccines will be coordinated among the Edison Public School District Central Office Administrators, Building Principals, and Hospital Officials. We ask that everyone be patient. We are a large district and will work as fast as possible to ensure vaccines for everyone. I would like to offer a special thanks to Virginia White and Bureau Patel for their undying efforts in securing vaccines for all of our employees. As of today. As of today, we have over 100 appointments scheduled already with vaccines for our staff beginning tomorrow. I'd like to read one more thing.
Yes, go ahead.
We're extremely grateful for all the efforts that have led us to this. And we do know that during the COVID times and then during this pandemic, there have been some exposures and some positive cases. I want to read you some of that information that we have for this week. And the information that is posted on our website is typically updated on every Friday. For this week, as of March 15th, for the March 15th week so far, we've had 15 positive cases in our schools among students and staff members, which resulted in quarantining 135 people. And while that number does seem high, and higher than it was the week before, I want to just talk a little bit about what we do to try to mitigate that. Out of an, out of an abundance of caution, we go beyond the guidelines of identifying close contacts by quarantining entire classrooms and cohorts of students in order to prevent a school-wide outbreak, which as of today, has not occurred. We are working closely with Mr. Elliott and the Health Department, who have applauded our efforts in this practice. Further, while many other districts in the county are using the 10-day guidelines for any and all cases, we continue to use the 14-day quarantine guideline for both positive cases and close contacts, and 24-day quarantine for those individuals who live within a COVID-positive case household. We are currently in discussions to expand our testing program to include more groups of students. In the event that any staff member or parent has any questions or concerns about contact tracing, the number of positive cases, or any other information specifically related to our practices, I urge them to reach out to their Building Principals and Vice Principals. Our Director of Human Resources, Dr. Alderelli, will gladly answer any questions that any staff may have. Please know that staff and student safety is a priority, and we continue to be diligent in our approach and our practices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now for the fun part.
Yes, for the fun part.
You know, sometimes you don't realize how much you miss someone until they're gone. I think that axiom's been said quite often. Well, that would be said about Mr. Michelle. As much as we're getting to really know Mr. Brennan and appreciate his input, Dan's expertise over the years, I've had to call him a number of times as we're putting the budget together for the upcoming school year. And he, like when I was a teacher and a principal, answered every question without having the numbers in front of him or even looking up the data. So I realized how important he was, at least to me personally, in the short time I was superintendent. Nonetheless, working with the Board of Education Finance and Facilities Committee, we put together a budget. And there's a couple of key components to the budget that I would like to share tonight. This is a preliminary budget that the board will vote on tonight. And then it will be presented at our, to the, I'm sorry, we will present it to the county. For, I'm sorry, the Executive County Superintendent, and then it will be approved by the state, and then it comes back to us for our regular public hearing, which we typically schedule in the first week of May. The key to this budget is, it's the exact same amount in total that it was last year. The 2020-21 budget was $274,225,476. The 2021-22 budget is $274,225,476, resulting in a zero increase. That in and of itself would be a Herculean task to do, but we were able to do that through efficiencies, through going over some other ways to save money, to working with our health provider and our health broker to potentially save as much as $5 million in a self-insured plan. We're working on all those things and trying to keep the impact of this at a minimum for our taxpayers. What is significant, though, is we had a significant increase in state aid for this year. From the overall budget last year, after they reduced us by almost $3 million, the increase is over $11 million in state aid. The Finance and Facility Committee, and is presenting this budget to the full board, is giving that money back as taxpayer relief. I've been in this game 32 years, and I've never been a part of that. It's a monumental event, and it will significantly impact our tax rate. So the average tax bill for 2021, school tax bill, we can only speak for the school side, will actually decrease $34. The tax levy used to fund this budget is $11 million less than what it was last year. Last year's tax levy for the budget was $235,13,168. This year's tax levy is $223,641,480. Results in our tax levy decrease. And if you do it by ownership for your houses and average assessed values, it's a minus 1.13 tax point. And will result in an overall reduction in the tax rate, 1.86 points. That's the aggregate. Like I said, everything else remains the same. We're committed to the programs we have, the staff members we have in, already in the budget moving forward. We don't anticipate cutting anything. And we're looking forward to continue to provide nothing less than excellence in our program and providing relief to our taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Sheehy.
Can you explain why we are voting today?
I'm sorry?
Can you explain why we are voting today? Normally, we'll vote in the public meeting.
Yeah, the reason we're voting today, it's a really good question, is this is due to the state on March 22nd. And our meeting, we won't have it done before then, so we asked if we could do it at the caucus meeting and have our board vote on this preliminary budget, so that we can submit it to the state on time. We did ask for an extension because our board meeting is the following day, and we were told we would not be granted that extension.
Thank you. Now we're open up for public comments on the budget only. So anyone for the comments, yeah, please come to the podium. Okay? Yes, I see. Okay. Yeah.
Tony, Piscopo, Pine Street. So my first question is, so in last year's budget, the $12 million that was for the construction in Lincoln School, was that included in that $277, or was that above the $277?
Do you want me to answer that, Mr. Sheehy?
No, let them finish all the questions. Let's do the thing.
So you want me to ask questions? Because I have, I have follow-up questions, so.
Yeah, please ask all the questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because what my, my questions are is this, in 2019, 2020, the budget was $262 million, okay? So 2020 to 2021, it was $277, but from my understanding, and this is what I need to know, if that included the $12 million for the bank cap, my question is, basically, $277, shouldn't that $12 million have been deducted this year from the budget? Or is it in the budget again? I mean, because you're saying it's the same as last year. If it was the same as last year, well, it's including that $12 million. If that's the case, then that should be deducted from the budget. So that's the one question that I'm trying to understand here. Because if that's the case, then we really do have a pretty big increase in the budget from last year because of that $12 million. So that's the first question I have. Is it in that $277, or was that $12 million above the $277?
Yeah, why, finish all your questions, and we'll answer it, just like what we did.
Okay, well. That's, that's really, that's really my question. So I mean, can that be explained to me first?
Yes.
Okay.
Last year's budget that was presented was at $277, like you said.
Right.
That was the budget that was presented in March.
Right.
And then the budget was approved in May, the $277.
Right.
Correct? If you remember, in August of last year, and credit to this board and the Finance Committee, because they anticipated it, we knew we would see a reduction in state aid, which we did. $3 million.
Right.
So the boards left with a decision in August, before students were slated to come back to school then, excuse me. How do we find $3 million?
Right.
Well, in last year's budget was $12.4 million, I believe, off the top of my head.
Right.
So we anticipated that, that $3 million, we reduced that.
Right.
So it wasn't 12.3, it wound up becoming down to 9.
Right.
And the idea was that we had capital reserve, because we had $9 million budgeted for the Lincoln addition, which is proceeding as now. But when it becomes due, that $9 million for the Lincoln reserve, we took basically three of that away.
Okay.
Okay? And the three of that that we took away, we had to give back to the state because we lost the state aid.
Right.
You with me so far?
Okay.
So we had $6 million in that budget slated for the Lincoln project. We still do. We still have the $3 million in capital reserve that we can take out of that. That's not included in the budget. That's a reserve account.
Okay.
That we earn interest on, it's in the bank, that when we need it, and it has to be dedicated to a capital improvement for the ones we specify with the state, it's still there.
Right.
So if you look at the budget this year for what the capital is, it's, I think, $10.5 million for this year's budget.
Okay.
And what is that capital going towards? It's going towards capital improvements of maintenance of equipment and things like that. It's detailed in the budget. We budget about $2 million of that for roof repairs. 19 school buildings require constant upkeep. Roofs, we cannot let just wait because, you know, there'll be water falling on our children's head. And then we have approximately about $6 million again for a capital project, such as the Lincoln School. Has not been determined yet, but that's in this budget as well.
Okay, so, so again, so really, last year's budget minus that $12 million.
I don't understand the minus, Tony. It was $277, right?
Right.
We lost $3 million in state aid.
Okay.
That immediately came from capital. That's where we took the money from.
Okay, what I'm saying is, is that this year, you're saying, oh, it's the same as last year. Well, if it's the same as last year, then that same money, that same $12 million that was in last year's budget is still in this year's budget. So we're paying again for $12 million.
It's not $12 million. It was reduced by 3.
Okay, $9 million.
$9 million.
Okay, $9 million. But that $9 million, why wasn't that taken off of this year's budget?
Because that $9 million for this year is going towards capital.
Right, so we're actually paying that money, that $9 million. That's in the budget. That's why, in other words, you're using that for capital again.
Give you an example. Last year, we spent $1.5 million in roofs, right? We're budgeting $2 million this year for roofs.
Right.
We need more roofs.
Okay, but that money last year, that $9 million, was allocated just for the bank cap. The bank cap was collected money that was for Lincoln School. That's what we were told. The bank cap was collected, it was, that was the specific money from the bank cap was the $9 million, specifically for Lincoln School. That's what we were told.
You're confusing the two. Lincoln School last year addition, when we had an architect, we had a design, we came, we presented to the public, was $9 million. In the budget last year,
Right.
just for Lincoln, last year's budget,
Right.
was $9 million. In August, we lost about $3 million, 2.996. And we, the board, I didn't decide, the board collectively decided, we'll take that from the Lincoln Project. The Lincoln Project still is going to cost $9 million.
Okay.
We had, so now we have $6 million. Are you with me?
Yeah.
There was a bank cap last year
Right.
of 12.5 million. That's in, that's in an account. That's not part of the annual budget.
That's what I'm saying, so that $12 million is above this $277?
Yes, it is. It's not part of this. It's separate.
It's a reserve.
It's a reserve.
Mr. Sheehy's shaking his head no.
We can only use that for capital improvements. It's a reserve account. It's not part of the annual budget.
That, okay, that was my main question. Then, last year, the $277, that $12 million, that bank cap, or whatever that amount is, was above the $277. It's not in that budget.
It was a separate account, not part of the budget. Correct.
Okay, that's what my question was.
That's still there.
Okay, so that money is still there. So that's still, so that's a part of the $274 now?
No, wait, I didn't hear your question.
Okay.
I didn't hear it.
I said, that's part of the $274 now, that $12 million? So that's not included in any of these budgets?
No, that's like if you had a retirement account at home, right? A 403B or Kehoe account, whatever. And you got $20,000 in that account. That doesn't impact your income next year. Hopefully, you get to add to it, or if you need to take money out of it.
Okay, so then just one more quick, I know my time's up. So the, the bank cap that was collected, okay, that increased the amount of money that was collected last year. It was like an 8% increase in money collected to the residents.
The increase last year was to fund the budget. The, the capital reserve account did not change last year.
Okay, so you didn't collect more last year from the residents, is what you're saying?
No.
It was, it was still 4. something, 4. whatever it was.
Correct, 4.58.
Okay, but there was not an increase of 8% last year of increase to the residents, you're saying?
Off the top of my head, I don't know what the increase, I know the budget went up last year.
5.45.
5.45.
Yeah, the tax levy is 5.45 or something like that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other public comments on the budget? Cristo, yeah. Budget only, all right?
It's the name they gave me. Yes, sir. Cristo, South Edison. Sorry about the phone. I'm doing two meetings at once. So I came in late. How long ago did the meeting start?
Seven sharp.
Seven sharp. All right, so you're only speaking about the budget right now? Okay. Now, is that just about the budget in front of me with the numbers, or can I start speaking about the budget task force as well? You said you were going to make a budget task force, Jerry.
Yeah, ask your questions, and we'll answer the end.
Okay, I, well, I'd like to be on the budget task force, but I found out that there was going to be a non-disclosure agreement. Is that true about the non-disclosure agreement?
Ask all the questions.
So if I were to be a member of the special budget task force, I'm sorry, I'm listening to her, and she's getting me messed up here. So if I were to be a member of the special budget task force, I wouldn't be able to, even if I found any discrepancies, I wouldn't be able to say what discrepancies I found to the public. Otherwise, I'd be, you guys would be able to sue me. But I would be able to say, hey, Jerry's stealing some money, right? So I could do that. Can you put me on the special budget task force, Jerry?
Anything else? Any other questions?
Yeah, I got more questions, but.
Keep asking. Take your six minutes.
All right. So. So what are these numbers I see in front of me, Jerry?
Dr. Bragan, just explain to us.
Explain?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm about to give you another question. Hold on.
Okay.
The lady keeps screwing me up. I'm listening to her, too.
What are you going to do? You're asking questions, which meeting are you at?
I'm right here, JP Stevens.
Ask the question.
Don't you see me, Jerry?
Cristo.
So now with all this money, total local tax levy, well, I'm not even going to speak about this. You said 0%, Jerry, that you're going to have a 0% budget this year. And I still don't believe you on that. Is there any way you can prove to me about the 0% that it wasn't just a campaign promise? Because, you know, I understand because of COVID and everything, a lot of our, a lot of the things I could have been spent money on were actually saved, and so it might actually be an illusion and whatnot, but are you still holding true to the 0% Jerry?
Keep asking questions, all the questions, ask it.
If you said, yeah, and you were holding true to the 0%, are there any services you're holding back to the children? You understand what I'm saying? Because you're going to have to cut some things back. What did you cut back exactly, Jerry?
Keep going. You have 2 minutes and 41 seconds.
2 minutes and 40 seconds?
Yeah.
All right. I'm just waiting for you to answer some of the questions.
No, you're done with it? You're done, I'll answer all your questions. I don't want this back and forth. I want you to use, I want you to use your six minutes.
That is a trick. Once I sit down, you're going to skip one of them. So this way, I would have been able to stay at the podium and say, hey, you missed this one question. All right, go ahead and answer, Jerry.
Okay. The 0% budget, as Dr. Bragan said, this year's budget, the proposed budget, is exactly the same as last year's budget. Okay? Last year was 274, 225,476. This is exactly the same, so that's 0%. Okay? As far as are there any services being cut, the answer is no. Okay? Dr. Bragan has mentioned, majority of the savings came from the insurance. Okay? And we have other things that we tighten up. All right? As far as the task force, okay? The task force did not actually happen, because the budget was finalized yesterday. The people who were on the task force, they did not have a pre-lock as a budget. Okay? So now this budget is public information. There's no need for, for a non-disclosure or anything. People can comment on it, and they can ask questions about the budget. So I hope I answered your question. Next, anybody else?
If it was going to be public information, what's the purpose of the non-disclosure agreement at that moment in time?
If it was not public, then if they're on it, yeah, then they have to sign a non-disclosure, but it did not happen, so. It's a moot point.
Hello, everybody. I'm Brian Rivera.
Get closer.
Edison Township. My question, you know, I might give kudos to the Board of Ed if, you know, if you're able to pull off that budget and keep it at the.
Get closer to them, yes.
I'd give you guys kudos if you were able to pull that budget and not raise any taxes and keep it the same. But my question is, I know you guys finished a contract with teachers, so I'm sure they're all allocated raises. So I'm sure there's a percentage of raises that came up. So my question is, how is it at zero if someone got a raise? So where is that funding coming to, to pay those teachers' raises? And my other question was, I know healthcare fluctuates, so I'm curious how there was an increase in the budget due to healthcare costs. I don't know, just off the top of my head, it popped up, but if you guys pulled it off, congratulations, man, you know? I'm sure everybody in the community is very thankful. So thank you for your efforts.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, and we did have increases in our, in our teachers' contracts and our other contracts. The teachers budgeted raises for next year, certificated and non-certificated staff, 3.1%. We actually budgeted similar raises to all our other employees, some that have collective bargaining agreements that expire in June, so we don't know what that would be, but, you know, we have to budget accordingly, because it's due, as I said, on the 22nd. So that comes to about $5 million, a little bit more in all the raises across all of our employees, you know, from our custodians to our bus drivers, to our teachers, to our principals, assistants, superintendents, and even myself. So how do we mitigate that and keep it at zero? There was a couple of cost efficiencies, as Mr. Sheehy talked about. One of our biggest, though, is we're looking to self-insure our medical prescription and dental. And while we still want to provide the same level of coverage as we have to by law, equal to or better for all of our employees that have health coverage, we do believe it's more cost-efficient to take that profit margin out of the hands of the carriers and give it back to our employees and taxpayers, who, they will pay less because the premiums will be less. And we will pay less because the expenditure, we're getting rid of that profit margin that the carriers currently have. So why would we allow them to make that money? Why don't we give it back to our taxpayers? That was the initiative that the Finance Committee gave to me, and Mr. Sheehy directly spoke to me about it. And that's, we're working with our carriers, and that's our expectation moving forward, Mr. Rivera. That's how we did it. Thank you.
Yeah, just basically, if you have a salary increase, you need to have something to offset increase. And that's how we offset that. And there are some other things that, if you look at the details, energies and all of that, to offset that increase. And some other increases, you got to, you got to balance it out. So kudos to the administration, Dr. Bragan, the administration team worked very hard on this. Again, that's, that's why, you know, the, it was, the detail was finalized yesterday. So that tells you, you know, how hard the team has been working on it. Okay? Any other, any other comments? Yeah, I think you can ask a question.
Tony, Piscopo, Pine Street. So with the $11 million in funding, what if the governor changes his mind like he's done in the past? What, what then happens with his budget if that does happen? If $11 million, say we get $5 million, what then happens? Do you guys go back and redo the budget? And then the other question is, when negotiating with the medical carriers that you were just talking about, again, this 0% is based on that also. So if that doesn't happen, what happens again with the budget? That all gets, so this is really just a preliminary proposal. It's not a definite, there's just a lot of factors that we have to, you guys have to work through for this to actually work. So those are my two questions.
Yeah, great questions. One, I can never speak to what the governor's going to do in the future. I have no idea. But I do believe that the commitment we had from the State Department of Ed is that they don't anticipate what they did last. is that they don't anticipate what they did last year. Last year was a result in reduction in revenues due to COVID. They don't expect it this year, but you're right, anything could happen.
Right.
You know, I can't guarantee the sun's gonna rise tomorrow.
Sure.
But I'm counting on it.
Me too.
And the other thing, along with the health benefits, you're right, nothing's etched in stone until it's on our tombstone, right? So, we've built in contingencies. One is, as you, you actually alluded to earlier, the capital in this budget is about ten million dollars. Within that capital is two million dollars for roofing repairs, which are needed, and we have to prioritize which ones we do first. There's another six million in there for potential projects such as Lincoln for next year, that we haven't had discussions yet on the board, exactly where that's gonna go, but it's gonna go towards overcrowding. So should we get a catastrophic increase in health benefits? Or a significant reduction in what our state aid is? We have that money to use, and we have to offset till the next year, those capital. We don't wanna do that, but if it is an emergency, it is an emergency. And that's not my decision.
Right.
That would be for the board and the Finance Committee to work out suggestions, and then the board to vote on it.
So then the average taxpayer with that eleven million we got from the state, you're saying is gonna be like a thirty-four dollar savings? Is that, I think that's what you said?
That's on the average assessed value.
Assessed value, yeah, okay. So then my, my question, my question is, with our, our buildings in such disarray and need a lot of work, why are we not using that eleven million towards that? I mean, we're, we're talking about overcrowding issues. Why don't we, I mean, thirty-four dollars on the assessed? I mean, to me, it's kinda like, well, is that really worth it? Like, wouldn't it be better to actually use money to fix our schools? Instead of, I mean, I'd love to take a poll of the residents and say thirty-four dollars on the assessed? Or would you rather put money that we're getting for free towards the school buildings so we can help the kids? That, that's really something I think you guys need to look at, is what are we doing with that money? Is thirty-four dollars gonna, and I know for some people, yes, it is a big deal. But again, if, if we can use eleven million on schools' buildings, we, we need to consider that also. Thank you.
Mr. Shi, can I respond to that?
Yes, please.
You ra, you raised good points, Tony, as you always do, insightful perspectives. And there, there's, I think it's two sides of the same coin, in my mind. The state increased our state aid, as they had promised to do, as part of the S2 funding. On an annual basis, they're supposed to do this. And we do have an eleven million dollar increase that we did not actually expect. It's actually an eight-point-five million dollars, cause they took the three last August. But, in practice, eleven-point-four million dollars, almost. And one could argue that we should put it directly into our facilities and our schools and our, you know, maintenance of our properties and things like that, and I don't think too many people would argue that. The other side of that coin is that for too long, the Edison taxpayers have been bearing an undue burden of this solely on the tax levy. And the state had not paid their fair share through the number of students in as large a town as we have. But they're entitled to this money, they're entitled to get it back, to get back to adequacy funding by the state so that we can give relief. And these are the things that the board wrestles with. I don't envy their position. They're elected officials representing all of you and our public, and they have to make that decision. Do we give the money back to the taxpayers? As, as was the intent of the governor's increase in the S2 funding formula? Or do we use it immediately for our capital improvements? I don't have that answer, I see both sides of that. The board has made this their position, and I'm the superintendent, and I support it.
Yeah, Brian?
So, I usually sit quietly and just listen. And, um, what you guys are doing is tough work. So, you know, but, sitting and listening to, to Tony, he made a very interesting point. And listening to last meeting, I was gonna speak last meeting, but it was eleven-thirty. But, um, I heard a lot of concerns last, last month about teachers not feeling that they have enough PPE. So, my question to you is, you have eleven million dollars. Does it have to be eleven million dollars to give back? Can it be seven? Give back seven, give back twenty-some, twenty-some dollars back to the public and, and use an additional four million dollars for PPE? Because, to be honest with you, um, I think the, the staff of Edison's doing a tremendous job. I think my teach, my, my kid's teacher's fantastic, and if I could steal her away from Edison, I would. But I do hear the concerns, I do hear concerns of my friends that are teachers in the district, administrators in the district, and there's concerns with PPE. So at this time, you know, I'm asking you guys, if you got the eleven, eleven million dollars, you know, hey, give back seven to the public and use four million dollars or so to provide proper PPE, because from what I'm hearing, you're saying they don't have it. And I don't know if they have it, I don't know if they don't have it, but I value my kid's teacher, and I wanna make sure my kid's teacher is there to June thirtieth or so. I wanna make sure she is safe, I wanna make sure her four children are safe, and her family's safe, the kids are safe, the staff is safe. So the only thing I'm questioning is, if you have this additional money, yes, it's great, give it back to the taxpayer. You know, I've been paying taxes here for over twenty thousand, for over twenty years, and I ain't have no children in school. So, I ain't complaining, I'm not complaining now. If you wanna give some money back to the taxpayer, kudos to you. But I also wanna make sure if we have that additional money, to please provide it to our buildings and our staff to make sure they're properly equipped and everybody could transition to this full-day, five-day, which I also wanna speak about later, properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. We, we value our teachers more than anything as well. You know, anyone in administration or in the board understands the teachers are, where the rubber meets, meets the road, and, and I do think they're doing a fine job in a difficult situation. I would also say to anyone that's listening or hears this, if anyone needs any PPE, contact your principal, your assistant principal. If that doesn't meet with satisfaction, contact me. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on PPE, masks, shields, gowns, gloves, latex, nitro, I don't even know what those mean, but we have them. We have all the PPE that we need. If we don't, if any staff member doesn't have the PPE they, they would desire or they, they want, have them requested of us, Brian, if you hear that from them, direct them to their principal and direct them to me. I understand your position, but that, that money's not needed for PPE, we have that. And one of the reasons we have it is some of the CARES grant monies that we got over the past year were significant. Millions of dollars, you know, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on masks and things like that, making sure we have anything, thermal cameras and other cleaning stuff and sanitization things. So we have it. If anyone has a shortage, they, they're not contacting the right person. And if whoever they contact doesn't get it for them, tell them to call me. I'll hand-deliver it to them. Okay?
So, again, the thirty-four is half-year. We didn't count the other half of the year.
We don't know that till next year.
Correct. So, when you talk about the budget, you know, the tax hit is, you gotta hit from half of the last year and this, this year, okay? So the, the thirty-four is a combination of last year and this year. Okay? The, the impact will also have a big impact to next year as well. Okay? So, you know, I understand the comments about, you know, this, this, this money that a lot of people wants to, to, to build schools and, and whatever. If you feel that the money, it, you, you know, should be used in a school, write a check back to us. Okay? We'll have a, you know, construction fund set it up. If the tax is accurate for you, write it back. Cause, you know, there's, there are, you know, a hundred thousand residents here. We want the residents to make their own decisions, how to spend the money. Right? So, the decision is in the residents' taxpayer's hands. What do they wanna do with the money? They think that, they, they wanna contribute to the school? Write it back, write a check, we'll be more than happy to take it. And if they wanna keep it, because it's pandemic, everything's tight, keep the money. That's, that's all. Can you, can you go to the speak? Well, let me, let me repeat, you can, so we do have a policy to accept donations. We have, we receive a lot of donations from, from different organizations, from individuals. The policy is already in place. So, moving forward, when, when, when the bill hits in, in July, okay? And the people wants to, the residents want to give back, we'll set up a special fund for that. Just write a check to that fund, it's deductible to, to, from your tax. We're more than happy to take it. Thank you. There's no, no back and forth, okay? So, alright, so any other questions? Alright?
Can I, can I make a comment, Jerry?
Yeah, any board member, uh, questions?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment, and then I had one question.
Closer.
Oh. So, my comment is that I just had to say this, that we've come a long way from four or five years ago when we got a fraction of the state aid to now, when we are close to being fully funded. I mean, just in one year between last year and this year, we've had a state aid increase of forty-seven percent, from about twenty-one million to thirty-five-point-eight million. When I joined the board in two thousand sixteen, we were being short-changed by twenty-four to twenty-eight million. And I have to mention Dr. Healan, Richard Brescher, and Teresa Ward, who were part of the state aid committee that advocated for full funding, that met many times, met with legislator, legislators, worked very diligently to kind of draw the point that we were being short-changed. And, so I just had to mention their names, and it's, makes me really happy that, that we got so much money and that we can do things that we could have never done before. Now my question is, only one question I have, is how much savings have we had? If you have, Dr. Bragan, if you have those numbers at the top of your head, in terms of substitute teachers, custodians, and all of those, you know, pandemic-related things, where we're not using the services? Like how much savings have we had in that?
That's a great question, Mrs. Madigore. We don't have those exact numbers, but as a, a number of people said, I do believe we will have some savings for that. And we'll, we'll, we'll have those numbers closer as we get to the end of the school year, when all the accounts have been encumbered and the expenses have at least been encumbered or not, and paid. And some of that we could use to pay down some expenses that we have that are outstanding, but also that'll be used as excess, excess surplus for next year's budget. And at that time, the board will make a decision via the Finance and Facilities Committee, usually in June, and then present it to the full board. If there's an excess, I'll make up a number. If there's an excess of seven million dollars, we can decide what we wanna do with that. Do we wanna use that for next year, even though the budget's already funded? That's dangerous, because you're not gonna guarantee that next year, right? Do we wanna move it to maintenance reserve? Do we wanna move it to capital reserve? We, the board will discuss those options at that time. I do anticipate we will have some monies to have that conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that is for next school year, because the current school year is a fiscal, budget has not been ended until June thirtieth.
Right.
So anything that I have left from, you know, this current school year is gonna be funded for the next school year.
Yeah, but we don't...
So anything that we have here is from the previous school year.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but I just wanted to know if we had a sense of how much savings we had so far, that's all.
Any other board members for, or comments on, on this one?
Jerry, I do.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Okay, my question is, I'm a little confused about a statement that keeps circling regarding our savings in health insurance, dental, and prescriptions. As a member of the Finance and Facilities Committee, it was my understanding on the day that we met that we were going to go self-insured for prescriptions, and we would have a savings of at least projected two million dollars. And when we discussed going with the other health insurance items, it was discussed that we would hold off on that till next year, rather than making a complete reduction this year and having to make up, next year we wouldn't have any kind of write-offs. So, as far as I knew, as a member of the committee, I thought we were just going ahead with self-insurance for prescriptions because that was the one item most that we could get a decent savings from. So, Dr. Bragan, I don't understand why you keep saying health insurance and prescription plan will be self-insured. I think that jumping ahead to doing it all in this timeframe is a little, I wanna say scary, or a little too much of a jump all at once. And the decision that we had made at the Finance and Facilities meeting as a committee was that we were going ahead with prescription. So, where all of a sudden are we going with the entire plan instead of just trying the prescription? I don't understand how that evolved. Could you explain that, please?
Sure. After our meeting, the Finance and Facility Committee meeting, and, Mrs. Conway, you got it exactly right. At that meeting, I personally said that, that while, after discussions with our carrier, Alamo Insurance, we were gonna self-insure our prescription, saving two million dollars. And we thought that would be great, and I happen to have experience doing that. We did that in a previous district where I worked, so we're pretty confident that we could do that successfully. Further conversations with our insurance broker revealed that not only is it possible to do it with the medical as well as your prescription and dental, but that we should do it, and it should be done now, because every year that we wait is more profit that's going to the carriers and not giving relief to the taxpayers. The board president asked me to have that conversation, I had it with him afterwards, and the suggestion was that if it's possible, let's have a meeting with the insurance broker, which we did, and then to see if we could include that savings into this year's budget. Rather than keep giving that three-million-dollar profit to the carriers, give it back to our employees and taxpayers. So instead of waiting another year, I, I was given a direction from the board president to do it this year and put that budget out for all of you to discuss. I must say, after reflection, I would concur with that. Because there's nothing I wanna do less than give the insurance people more money. And if we can give it to our employees and lower our costs and to our taxpayers, I think we should do it. Is there a risk? There's a risk in getting up in the morning. I could stay in bed all day and stay warm, and there's no risk to that. There's also no benefit either. So, we have some contingencies, as I think when I answered Mr. D. Pasquale's question. Should something happen and it not work out as plans, we will be fine. We will delay some of the capital things that we want to do, which we do wanna do and we should do. But when emergencies present themselves, like they did almost this entire last school year, we adjust, we adapt, we overcome, and we move on.
Okay, then my question, Jerry, is, should the Finance and Facility Committee have been recalled so we could discuss it as a committee? Is this something that the president just has, and I'm not sure of the rules? Do you have the right to just overrule what the committee had initially discussed? Or should you really have called the committee to come back in again? Is my question to you.
So the question is, should we continue to give the taxpayer and staff's money to the insurance company or not?
No, that's not my question.
If, if the answer is no, then we need to move ahead and get it done. So this preliminary budget is just submitted for the county to, to approve. And, things can be changed. If you think that this, this is not the right way to do it, you wanna put the, the three-million-dollar back, give it to the insurance company? We can discuss it, we can do it at the final submission. But I, I do not wanna give taxpayers' money to the insurance company. I do not want our staff's, the, the premium to go off. And, that's, that's a very simple answer to that.
But that wasn't the answer to my question. My question was, if we had gotten the advice from the insurance company that we should go ahead, I think the whole committee should have been given the right to sit and listen, and most likely, the four people on the committee would have probably agreed. The only question I'm having right now is protocol. Should we have had a meeting of the committee again to go over it to explain the changes that were made from the initial time when we all discussed what we did as a committee initially?
Well, you could have gave me a call, I could have answered your questions, and, you know...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You could have gave me a call and answered, I could have answered your question, you have my contact. You can ask me, you can ask Mohan, Mohan is the chair of the committee. We can all give you the answers that, that we, you know, you try to get, right? The bottom line is, do we wanna give the money to the insurance company? The answer is no.
You're kinda sidestepping what I'm asking for. I'm asking for protocol as to, in the future, when making decisions, I think the committee should be called together. My other question to you, Dr. Bragan, is we talked about... My other question to you, Dr. Bragan, is we talked about approximately a twelve-million-dollar stimulus that we were getting? I'll wait.
Yeah, so, the thing that, it was Friday, right? The Friday we got the, when did we get the number from? From very late.
Friday.
Yeah. So, very late, and, you know, that's what it is. You know, you had to call committee for that? Yeah. But.
I'm sorry, Jerry, I'm.
We got the number, we got the number from very, very late, okay? So, answer your question. Calm down. Okay? So, the committee gave a recommendation. So, we can have discussions with superintendent. And superintendents, you know, can put the budget in, to the board to approve on it. So, it's that simple, okay?
No.
So.
That's not what I'm asking. And the other question I have regarding, at the meeting, we also talked about that twelve, it was approximately twelve-million-dollar stimulus that we talked about, and we had made some suggestions as to how to utilize that money. And my question is, I saw online that Edison was granted actually fourteen million, eight-hundred-seven-thousand, five-hundred-twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. My question is, is that something that's given to the township? Or was that something that was assigned to our school district? Because I'm not hearing that dollar figure, which was, I was very glad to hear that we were getting a little bit more because we were talking, throwing around that it was going to be about twelve million. And seeing that it was actually fourteen million, eight-hundred-seven-thousand, five-hundred-twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Do we get all of that to your knowledge?
I'm not sure where you're getting that number, Mrs. Conway. What we talked about at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting is my recollection was the additional CARES grant money, ESSR grant money that we don't yet have, we have to apply for by May fifteenth, and it was four-point-three million dollars. And we talked about possibly using that for some capital improvements such as auditoriums, cafeterias in the two biggest high, in our two high schools, as well as providing air conditioning. And if I remember correctly, my notes were that my charge was to work with the architect and get a potential price to bring back to the committee. And that's where I am in that process.
No, I'm talking about that stimulus money.
That's a township money.
Because there was a list from the governor.
That's township money.
And it was shared to all the town, it had a list of all the townships in the state of New Jersey. And Edison was down as the dollar figure that I keep responding to.
I just, I don't think that was, I don't think that was Board of Ed money because I didn't get it from the DOE. I don't know that, Mrs. Conway. It might have been it was township, Mr. Shi, you were saying? I don't know.
Because it was for the, the way the article was written, it was for helping the district, the school district to upgrade any kind of like HVAC systems or improvements to the school to help with making the schools more safe and secure. That's my understanding of the article.
That's a CARES grant that Dr. Bragan mentioned about. It's a separate bucket, it's, we need to apply for it.
I'm sorry?
It's a separate grant, that's Dr. Bragan mentioned. It's not, it's not this fourteen million dollars to the township. If the money go, the fourteen million to the township is coming to the school board, I'll be, will be glad to take more off from the tax levy.
No, I thought the four-point-three million was different than, remember, we were throwing around a twelve-million-dollar item.
If I may add, four-point-three million was for the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund Two, ESER Two. That's where the four-point-three million is coming for. That's what the Board of Ed is going to get for school upgrading, for HVCs, and anything that's going to help alleviate, according to coronavirus. So, if there's any issues with spacing or whatnot, that's where the money is going to be appropriated for. That's where the four-point-three, the fourteen million is for the township to do the same.
Any other board member comments? See none? All right? Because we, because of the deadline of submitting the budget to the county, so we're voting on this today, and normally we don't vote on the caucus meeting, but today is a special. So, with that said, can I have a motion to vote on the budget? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Can I have a second? Okay. Shivi? Roll call.
Mr. Beryl Patel?
Yes.
Ms. White?
She's not here.
Not here yet. Mr. Matigore?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Podofsky?
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Conway?
As a preliminary budget, yes.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Mohan Patel.
Yes.
And I'm yes to.
Excuse me, excuse me. My apologies. Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
And then Mr. Shi.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's go through the remaining of the agenda item. Dr. Bragan?
Sure. You'll find after the vote, we have National Autism Awareness Resolution. I'm going to read that right now. Whereas April has been designated National Autism Awareness Month by the Autism Society of America, and whereas autism spectrum disorders are a group of developmental disabilities that contribute to lifelong social communication and behavioral challenges, and whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the world, and whereas autism recognizes no culture, ethnic, or socioeconomic boundaries, and whereas each student with autism has a complex and distinct profile, and whereas the goal of the National Autism Awareness Month is to provide an opportunity for all concerned parties to educate the public about autism and issues within the autism community, and whereas every student with autism is a unique learner, and the public schools of the Edison Township, of Edison Township reaffirms its commitment to tailor instruction to meet the learning needs of each student, and whereas the public schools of Edison Township will provide all students with autism the respect, encouragement, and opportunities they need to build knowledge, skills, and attitudes to be successful, contributing members of adult society. And whereas the public schools of Edison Township recognize that strong and collaborative efforts among families, schools, and community organizations are the foundations upon which success for students with autism are built. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Edison Board of Education continues to pledge its support to the energy and the efforts of staff, family, community members who seek to ensure learning and success for our students with autism spectrum disorder. We have another resolution that's supporting Governor Murphy's resolution seeking a waiver of the Elementary Schools and Secondary Schools Act testing that's mandated each year through, from grades three through eight and in the high school levels and according to the content areas specified, that due to the year we've had with COVID and most of the learning is remote, to have a waiver for those federal assessments. I'm not going to read that whole one. It's the governor's, basically it was captured in the governor's executive order, and schools are adopting that in support of that initiative. Under curriculum instruction, we have the submission of the New Jersey CAP grant program. We were awarded the grant, and we were waived to pay the thirty percent fee that the district typically pays for that. That's going to be on Tuesday's meeting for approval. We have a scheduling of the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments to take place in April, May, and the assessment is still fluid. I think we had some changes actually happen today. So, if we don't get the waiver for those assessments, we still have to schedule and plan for the test, which may be done remotely, which would be the first time, I believe, that we've done that. There's also a resolution to approve the professional development. It's much less than it typically is. The virtual training sessions, except for the one in Atlantic City in May, and I'm not sure that's going to take place, but it's scheduled for that, for the athletic directors. There's also an updated list of our added district placements. You know, those are fluid placements. They change due to changes in programming as well as people moving in and out of the district. And that's what our typical changes in placement would be for. That's all I have. Board President Shi?
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, all new BA.
Can I ask a question, Jerry? Can I ask a question?
Oh, you have a question?
Yes, I do. So, Dr. Bragan, regarding the NJSLA, when would, when would we know if we've been granted the waiver or not? And are we prepared to do these tests? Because it's like already the middle of March, and the first test is beginning in April here.
Correct. We're planning on doing them, Mrs. Matigore, because that's what I would rather do than have them say that we don't have to do them. I think as late as today, we got notice that one of the dates was changed, the windows. So, we're going to plan to have them done and do what we're supposed to do according to the state. If I know from my experience working with the state Department of Ed, it could be the day before we get the waiver. I can't speak to that.
Okay. Finance report. The investment report for the period ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one shows six thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-nine cents in interest, and the year-to-date interest received for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year is fifty-two thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. The February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one public meeting minutes, as well as the Board Secretaries' report and the Treasurer of School Monies' report have been given to the board to review, and these items will be approved at the March twenty-third public meeting. The finance resolutions for the month consist of a transfer of funds totaling three hundred sixty-two thousand, one hundred eleven dollars. The acceptance of the two thousand twenty Protect the Gramscheade Grant for various school, various schools. Each school will receive ten thousand dollars. The acceptance of the Sustainable Jersey for Schools Grant for James Madison Intermediate School in the amount of ten thousand dollars. The rejection of the rebid for pupil transportation's activity and late buses for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. The number-two fuel, oil, diesel fuel, and gasoline bid through the Hunterdon County Educational Services Commission co-op. I believe we're going to, we're going to table the appointment of the.
And for next meeting.
Until next meeting, the Architect of Record. The approval of the non-public school security aid services orders. Obsolete items for Woodbrook Elementary School and Woodrow Wilson Middle School. The bills list as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one totaling twenty-six million, seventy thousand, and three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And the monthly transportation report. Concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, we open.
I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I just want to know why we don't have a name for the Architect of Record?
Yeah, the, yeah, want to speak?
We got the final submissions came in yesterday, and they haven't been thoroughly reviewed yet, so we don't know all the information.
We had USA Architect before this, right? Right now, we have US, is that the one we're trying to?
I wasn't trying to do anything, but the board asked me to put out an RFP. I think we have about eight or nine architects submitted, and I don't think they've been reviewed yet in order to make a determination. So, Mr. Shi asked me about that today. I said, we really haven't gone over that information. So, that's why we asked to wait until Tuesday, I believe.
Is this competitive bidding or like, is it like the lowest bidder gets the?
It's a professional services, so it's RP, Request for Proposal.
Okay, so the board will make the decision. Okay, thank you.
So, this architect is for Lincoln?
I don't think so. We've had conversations about that. We have an architect for USA, is currently working on the Lincoln project. And my understanding was from the board president that they would stay on that job until it's bring to completion.
Which one is this for? The one that we are trying to get in item number six?
Get closer, please.
Is it for Lincoln or for some other project?
No, it's for, for the, for the, for Lincoln. Lincoln's already done.
Okay. So, this is for, if something comes up in the future?
Yes.
So, just another question. So, Lincoln was, is done by USA Architect, right?
Correct. They will continue to do it.
So, I just wanted to, I mean, I remember that they came up with much lower numbers in terms of the total cost of construction. And that's what struck me when I, last year, served on the Facilities and Finance Committee. They were building more classrooms for Lincoln at a lower cost. So, I just want to make sure that we have not overlooked, you know, the kind of services they brought to us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments about these items? Before we open up board members for any other, for open discussions? Yes.
Okay, now I can talk about good things.
Whatever you want to talk about.
This month of March, we've been celebrating Read Across America. And I got invited to many of the elementary schools and preschools. And each and every one of them was just so phenomenal. The kids were really in tune. The teachers were excited. We had a reading at each classroom that we attended. And then we actually ended each session with a question-and-answer period, which I so loved coming from the students. And my last actually Read Across America is tomorrow morning. So, as a board member, this is one of the extreme highlights of my being a Board of Education member. Number two, I can't say enough thank yous to Dr. Bragan, Virginia White, and Beryl. Your endless working is beyond anyone's expectations. I have no idea how you even get to sleep sometimes.
I agree.
I'm sure the staff at all the different schools that were not able to get a vaccination will be more than excited that they can. And even I heard a few of them saying now they're really excited because you can't get into a Met or Yankee game without actually testing positive or getting shots. So, even more of them are willing to get the shots than they had before, which is exciting. So, I look forward to hearing the timeframe as to how many and when we are able to get the vaccinations for our staff. And I thank you again. The only other thing I would like to say in public that I understand all the people that are very concerned with us moving forward with this difference in the hybrid section going forward next month. The only thing I can say is this is something that was decided by the administration, and they feel that it's the best for our district at the time. We just hope and pray that it's a right decision, and nothing is in cement that if it was not a good decision, we'll have to revisit it. And I place my trust in Dr. Bragan in making these decisions. People say the Board of Ed has a lot of things on their shoulders, and they wouldn't want our positions. Well, even though, Dr. Bragan, you get paid very well, I still wouldn't want your job as to making that final decision. And I just want to reach out to all of those that are concerned, that I feel the same as you do. And I just hope that we can make accommodations because personally, I wouldn't want to sit in front of a computer from nine to three-thirty myself. So, I hope that we can do it successfully and move forward in a positive way. And I'll just keep my prayers and my fingers crossed that we're going in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Okay. Anybody?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, Shivi.
So, I just wanted to thank all the reading specialists of different schools for inviting me for the Read Across America Week. I read at MLK, Lindonau, and Woodbrook School, and interacted with many students. And one was particularly interesting when I asked, you know, what can the board do for you? One, one student wanted a recliner. So, I just thought I would convey. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to add on to, I'm sorry.
Do you have anything you want to say?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, go ahead.
I just want to add on to what Elizabeth had just said. Beryl, the superintendent, Virginia White, and Andy Toth, that you guys did an amazing job trying to get those vaccines and working behind the scenes to try to do it. Wonderful job. Thank you so much for doing it, and the teachers will really appreciate it, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have to speak.
Beryl?
Okay, so. Okay, so on a very positive note, everyone saw that the arrangement has been made, like Dr. Bragan described in detail, to vaccinate our educators and staff members in the next few weeks. Now, that's a huge relief for everyone, as we all in the board have worked extremely hard with the township administration, people in the county, mayor's office, and discussed it with several individuals, even within the BOE meetings, at the township BOE meetings, and explored many other outside options to get where we are. So we are thankful for that. We have done, put many efforts, but like Mrs. Conway said, we should, we can do better and make sure all of our educators and support staff gets vaccinated as soon as possible. And that being said, when Moderna or whoever company it is makes a children's vaccine, we all want to be ahead of the curve and want to be possibly one of the first districts in New Jersey who can vaccinate all our children ASAP, right? I, I'll second with Mrs. Conway. On the wonderful Read Across America, this was my personally first time doing it. I also want to take this opportunity to thank all the wonderful teachers and all the support staff members for their extraordinary efforts with the hybrid learning. I read as a part of Read Across America at seven different schools. Tomorrow, Mrs. Conway, is going to be my eighth one at that school as well, the James Madison Primary. So at every school, I saw the dedication of our educators in order to manage the entire class remotely and in person. And at the same time, while doing that, they kept all the children, every single child, whether they are remote or in person, engaged and enthusiastic. This is a testament to our extraordinary commitment over staff, parents, and children towards their education and pursuit of excellence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just want to echo what everyone said, you know, kudos to the, the committee, the Township Liaison Committee led by Mrs. White, Mohim Patel, and Bureau Patel and Shivi. That's one of the, the first item, the, they, when they had the meeting with the township, that's the one that they talked about is vaccine. And Virginia worked really hard, and she's not here today. Yesterday morning, she was on the phone with the senator's office chewing the, the, which is the chief of staff's ear off just to get the vaccines in our district. And again, you know, Dr. Bragan, you have started from the day one, tried to work harder with the township, and Andy Toth, really appreciate it, and it's finally paid off. Bureau, I don't know how you do it, and we all know that, you know, these vaccines went, with these appointments, they release them in the middle of the night. And Bureau has been tirelessly helping anyone that reach out to him, try to book these appointments. So a lot of these appointments are happening in the middle of the night, so really appreciate it. Hope you can have some relief now for the staff, but, you know, continue to work for the seniors and the others. Try to help them as much as you can, okay? Thank you. I just have a, another thing that I want to announce is the Edison, Beautify Edison Scholarship. That's, that's being set up. So people, we encourage our students to apply for the, for the scholarship, and also they provide grants to beautify town. So we would actually encourage those students to, to apply for the grants and work on the, on the schools and make our school look beautiful. Okay, Maria, if you want to add a little bit afterwards? Oh, that's great. That's great. Okay. And the other thing is, especially with the opening of the school in, for full-time in the fourth marking period, there were some questions from the parents. I just want Dr. Bragan to clarify. Let me just open it up. So the first question is, will the four-day schedule in the fourth marking period the same schedule before pandemic or the hybrid schedule? The second question is how the lunch will be served. Parents are concerned that, you know, the kids are eating, eating lunch in the school. And the third is, is the district looking into upgrading ventilation? And the fourth question is, if staff wants to teach in the building before April 15th, that's what the schedule said, you know, at April 15th, you can come in teaching in a school. But if some of the staff, they want to teach in the building before the 15th, will someone be in there? Can they, can they do that? So those are the four questions.
Okay. Regarding the schedule, we're actually meeting as an administrative team. We've been meeting throughout the pandemic, but our central office is going to meet tomorrow and try to iron out that schedule. You know, we, we do want it to be a full day of instruction for the students, but we don't want people to be exhausted by sitting in front of a screen, you know, for, you know, six hours, six and a half hours at one time. So we're looking at that, you know. It will be a full day of instruction, though, in the school, especially for the students that are coming in person. We do think for some of our elementary students, that may be the difference between whether they come in or not, because daycare and childcare is a significant issue for the families that can only come in at 12 o'clock, and then they have to work it out. If they can have a guaranteed placement for their child in the full day, and then they could have the before and after-school programs before and after that, it may help them return to some degree of normalcy. So that's why the survey is critically important. I think we had about 3,100 responses before the meeting. We have about 17,000 students. We gave a deadline of March 26th for parents to complete that. So please, everyone, encourage the family members, the parents, and guardians to complete that, so we have a really good idea of the actual number of students that want to come into the buildings that'll help us determine everything from scheduling to lunch and to all those things. We're going to have lunch in the schools. As of now, as you know, when we were a hybrid in the fall, we had about 20% of our students attending. Before, we have about 20% now, maybe a little less, give or take, on different days. So when we come back to all day, we anticipate that to increase somewhat. I don't really know what that will be, though. So when we get those numbers, that'll determine what lunch will look like. We're entertaining ideas of having tents and structures where we could spread things outside. You know, some of our spaces at our schools, like Menlo Park, just had their courtyard renovated. We'd love to be able to use that space. We have to provide some type of covering. However, we can't just go out and rent tents. You know, we're a school facility. It has to be DOE-approved. We have to make sure it meets the fire code. So there's a lot of moving parts, but we're working on that, and we're going to do the best we can to provide as safe an environment as possible and still extend the school day. Regarding the ventilation, we do what we can to make sure everything's up to speed and up to snuff, but you know, these buildings, some of them are 70 years old. To upgrade the HVAC in every building, you're looking at tens of millions of dollars. That's not going to happen between now and April 19th. With the warming weather, we don't, we think the windows could be opened more regularly and be more comfortable in the classroom. But anything we can do as far as making sure the filters are cleaned and replaced on a regular basis, making sure our schools are sanitized daily, every day, like we want them to according to our cleaning protocols, we're going to do that. As far as staff members coming in before that April 19th day, I don't see that as an issue, but they have to follow the CDC guidelines. So if they travel to another state, if they went away on vacation, I, I don't want them to come in. That's the whole point of us having that two-week period after the spring break. So if they can assure us and their principal that they didn't travel and they have met all the requirements, yes, they can teach from their classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. So you say you're working with the administration on the schedule, you're, and the survey is due on the 26th. So is it possible the schedule can be released before the 26th, so it might?
Absolutely.
Yeah, change people's mind whether they want to do it in, you know, in-person or remote.
Okay, fair enough. We'll try to get that. We'll work on it now, but the ones, the family members. Never any pressure, but the family members that are planning to have their children come to school, they will be in our building for the duration of the full school day. So what that exactly looks like within the day, and for some of the students that are remote, maybe not exactly just sitting in front of the screen synchronous, we're working that out now. But the in-person students will be in school as a traditional school day. So the elementary, I think, starts at 8:50 and ends around 3:20, whatever those exact times are. That's what their day will be.
Okay, thank you.
And the same for middle and element and secondary.
Okay, thank you. I hope that helps some of the, the parents who ask these questions.
Okay, and if anyone has a question, you know, to the board or the public, they can direct them to their principal, or they can direct them directly to myself. I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Sure. All right, now we, do we have any other board member comments? All right, now we open for public comments. So anyone? Yeah, Maria.
Hi, I'm Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson, Edison. The first topic I'd like to talk about is EA Sports. It's looking forward to next year's club. I look forward to a friendly game between JP Stevens and Edison High. The next thing I'd like to talk about is Beautiful Edison, beautifuledison.com has a student grant for five-year-olds to 18-year-olds. Edison Township Youth to enhance a specific area within the township to improve the general landscape. Registration will end on April 16th. Go to beautifuledison.com, and the winners will be announced on April 22nd. I had the privilege to attend the Edison Municipal Alliance Zoom meeting on March 10th. Thank you for Barel Patel, Elizabeth Conway, and Virginia White. Along that, we discussed the Babes Program, that's the second and third graders, and the Bridges Program at JP Stevens, students, high school students. Currently, they're waiting on grant information for the 2022 year. This is a part of the Mobile Family Success Center, the Spring Festival Drive-Thru for April 1st, 115 Truman Drive. Also is discussed a family support organization. They'll be on Friday, March 19th. The Mobile Family Success Center is doing a car seat safety check. Next issue I want to talk about is the sidewalks. If we could check the sidewalks around the schools. My one question is on Preston, Preston Street between Vulcan and Center Street. There's no sidewalk over there. If you could put one in, that'd be great. Light on the Boulevard of Eagles and Opost Road. If they did a traffic study over there. And my last thing, I've teamed up with the Community Police Sergeant Don Ship, and they're having a Zoom meeting on March 24th at 7:00 PM. If anybody's interested, it's the Community Policing Unit, and anybody is free to log in with any concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tony.
Tony, it was flawed to Pine Street. So I have a few questions that I'm going to direct to the board president. So Mr. Shi, we've had discussions about who's on the Budget Task Force, and one of the responses you gave me is that you were going to check with the lawyer to see what the legality of it was, to see if the names didn't have to be brought out to the public. And I still haven't heard the response, so had, did you actually ask the lawyer? Can I ask the lawyer? Did Mr. Shi ask you that question?
Asked the question, all the questions.
Okay, but I'm going to ask him, and he can respond later. But I want to know if Mr. Shi actually did ask you if there's legal, a law that says, or is it breaking the law, that we as a public don't know who's on the Budget Task Force? Because again, that was said, that he was going to ask the lawyer, no response was ever given, okay? Number two, so I became aware last week that, and, and I was told this, that there is now a cricket committee for the fields in, in Edison that the Board of Education has, and, and through the chair. Again, you know, Elizabeth or, you know, Shivi or, you know, do you guys know anybody on this committee? Do you know anything about this committee? Mr. Shi, if you're going to let us know what this committee is actually going to be doing, because I did ask Dr. Bragan about how the process was going to work, and he told me that in his office, there will be somebody who's going to be taking care of the permits for the cricket fields. So again, I'd like to know who's on this committee, how it was chosen, and what was the criteria for those that were chosen for this committee? The other thing is, so I also found out something very interesting, and let me, let me get it here, because I'm going to read it directly. So one of the people that is running for council has on their campaign flyer that he is an Edison Public Schools Pandemic Response Senior Advisor to the Board President. So again, who, like, what, what's the criteria? When did this person start in this position? How was this position created? Is the board, anybody else on the board aware of this? And what is the legality of the Board President having somebody who is the senior advisor to the Board President, which would mean that the senior advisor to the whole Board of Education? Or can he just have somebody that's just directly advising to him? I, I, I don't get this. I mean, yes, he's the president of the board, but you're all board members. So you would think that you would all be aware of these, of these things that are happening. So, you know, I, I just would like to know, you know, I, I've talked, I don't know how long, many years about transparency. Okay, transparency to the residents, and I still don't see that happening, okay? Elizabeth is asking you a question. You do nothing but skirt around the question. Why can't you just answer questions directly? You just skirt around the questions. So if you could, please, let the public know what's happening with these three topics, the Budget Task Force, if you did check with the lawyer, who's on the Cricket Committee, and how is this whole process going to work? And also, what's the deal with the special advisor? So those are my questions.
Okay. Anybody else?
Anybody else what?
We can answer all of them at the end.
You're not answering my questions?
I'll answer your questions, yeah.
Wait, 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 wait. No, the way the process has always worked is you answer my questions, and then after that, somebody else comes up. You're changing the process now?
I'll answer all the questions at the end, so.
If there's the same questions that are being asked, we don't want to be redundant, and that's the reason why.
Wait, 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 wait.
Everyone, everyone, take a second.
What's the process of public comments?
Sir, it's not a back and forth.
What's the process of public comments?
I'm answering your question. I will answer.
Okay, answer my question.
I will answer if you stop talking.
Okay.
Okay, I can't, I don't want to talk over you.
I'll be quiet. Go ahead.
The public comment section is for you, the public to comment. You can ask questions as part of your comment. The board should not answer you while you're asking your questions, and no public entity does that, does that regularly have.
Okay, so you're changing the rules, because for years, the way the process has worked is you ask the question, and before you leave, the board members answer the question, or the president answers the question. So again, the transparency to the residents is nothing. This is what's happening now, right? The process has always been what I just said. So in other words, it's continuing that you don't want to give the residents what they want to know. That's what you're telling me. This is now all just changing all of a sudden, because Mr. Shi is now the president of the board. For the past few years, I've been coming to board meetings, and this is the way the process has been. So now you're just going to have everybody come up, ask questions, and at the end, you're going to answer them? Is that the process?
Yes.
That's the process across the board?
Let him finish. You don't?
Is that the process across the board?
I don't want to take your time.
I still have more time.
Yeah, yeah, ask your, ask all of that.
That's my question. What is the process for public comments?
Then you sit down. We're going to answer. Sit down.
Okay.
You want to answer, John?
When we answer at the end, I'll answer at the end.
Are you going to answer?
I will answer his question.
Can you calm down, guys?
Yes.
That's a new procedure.
Are you going to answer?
You're going to, you're going to come over here. I will answer his question.
Can you calm down, guys?
Yes.
That's a new procedure.
Yes, can you, can you answer the, yeah.
You want to answer right now, before the next speaker speaks? That's fine.
I want to hear the answers as well.
That, I'm sure you do, Krista.
Why not? Why? So you guys can get everyone's questions answered?
No, 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 I'm sure.
No, listen, first, first of all, there's a process under the Open Public Meetings Act, as I indicated at the last meeting. Sorry, let me just pick it up, because the guy, the tech man told me to take it off. There's a process under the Open Public Meetings Act for how this is supposed to work. It's a civil discourse, all right? It's not supposed to be a back-and-forth conversation.
I wasn't back and forth.
Well, well, that's.
What is this about right now?
We let you talk. Your time is expired. Now you can't speak. And that's the problem, from what my observation, what's going on at the meetings since I've been coming for the last four meetings now, that there's a discourse that goes back and forth, which is not what's supposed to happen. You're supposed to make your comments. The board will answer your comments when you are done.
Right.
All right? There's no issue with transparency. Everybody on this board is capable, as am I, of taking notes, which is what I was doing, writing down all of your questions, and at the end, we will answer them. And at the end, we will answer them. And for some reason, there's a question that we don't answer, or that the Board doesn't answer, you have a rebuttal period right now that's permitted, so you can, you can ask it again, and it will probably get it, but it probably is going to get answered in the first part, because like I said, this is a very intelligent Board. They're taking notes, we have a wonderful Superintendent, he's taking notes, everyone's going to answer you. There's no issue of transparency.
You're funny.
No.
I don't, this is, this is supposed to be a civil meeting, I don't, I don't appreciate the insult.
It's just his nature.
Kristo? Come.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, you, you want?
That's the name they gave me, Mr. She. So.
Sinistza.
Oh, the mic.
Get closer.
Kristo South Edison, I just heard so much verbal diarrhea, and not one question answered. There's no reason why we can't, it used to be we would answer the questions after the speaker, and now it's changing to we're answering the questions after everybody speaks. First of all, after one speaker, you guys can't even answer everyone's questions. I doubt you're going to be answering or remembering everyone's questions at the end. About the Task Force question, yes, it's an open public record. If somebody's working on anything, or any budget, or any committee, it's an open public record for who's on the Task Force. Make an Oprah request, if they refuse to give you that, it's a lawsuit. It's a lawsuit against the BOE. You won't get any money, but they'll have to pay $10,000 to the lawyer. I want to know, who's on the Cricket Committee? We're going to have, we need, or we actually need a Cricket Committee? Are you kidding me? So, who's your Special Advisor? Sparshall? Sparshall's the Special Advisor? Who's the Special Advisor? It's not you, right, Shannon? You're not the Special Advisor?
You can't talk to her like that, okay? Respect. Talk through the Chair.
I, I'm, I'm.
You can't ask Board member, you have to go through the Chair.
I always talk through the Chair.
Okay.
So, St. Patty's Day on the 17th, that's when it starts, 17th? St. Patty's Day? That's really when, so I celebrate from 17th all the way to 25th, which will be the Greek I love, I love to find excuses to party, Jerry, but.
So far.
Only four minutes, good for me. So, yeah, I, I don't appreciate you not answering anyone's questions. I don't appreciate answering someone's questions when they're done. I want to be able to ask a question, and you answer me right on the spot, because there's been numerous instances, you tell me to sit down, and then I'll get back home, and then I'll remember, hey, you didn't really answer any of my questions. It's happened. You said, you've been watching the meetings four times, or, oh, actually, I want to speak about the last meeting. Like the lawyer said, in the Edison bylaws, there's no, there's no need to give a rebuttal. When you give a rebuttal, that's a privilege, it's not a right. It's my right to come up here and speak during public comments. You guys, it's a privilege when you give someone a rebuttal. So I want to actually know why four people got rebuttals before first-time speakers, and it's not even that. We argued the last time, lawyer, once public comments hits, public comments for everybody. You can't categorize people. What happened last time is you're for the school, open it, you're against the school, open it, and then public comments for everyone. Well, now you just gave someone three chances to speak. I could have even been, came up and spoke for or against. That's why we had to be here until 11 o'clock that night. Lanky might be putting me on the Ethics Committee, and I want you to know, Jerry, I'm going to have a lot of power on the Ethics Committee. I'll be able to fine you up to $200 every violation. I'll be specific, I love you, Jerry, but at the same time, I want to fine a lot of people. I want to be known as the most, as a person who fined the most government officials. So, yeah, I already got two fines ready for you, which will be $400. Yeah, I'm not going to waste my two minutes speaking about that. I'm very disgusted with what's going on in Edison, and I'm not going to mention any names, or, or from what, what people, but very disgusted. The same people that talk about respecting rights care nothing about rights. It's really a shame, nobody, you can't, you can't even do anything in this town unless, I mean, in the EDO, you can now, if you choose to screen, if you choose to be respected. Everywhere else, not respected. Lawyer, you should know, because you're a lawyer and all, can't go around discriminating on people, you can't, I'm going to tell you this, the last time I was here, you disrespected me. You said some things when I was speaking up here, and there's a reason he hired you. He hired you because you're Armenian. I know you hired him because he's Armenian, because you thought I was going to show him respect. But I'm going to tell, I'm going to tell you something, lawyer, one thing I hate is traitors, so I'm hardest, most on Greek people, if I think they're betraying anybody.
Are you going to try to shame my ethnicity? Is that what you're, is that what you're doing right now?
I'm not shaming anybody. Robert Tools of Order, did you just interrupt the speaker?
You're just going to personal attack on me.
Out of order, he's out, call him out of order.
I don't think he's going to call me out of order.
He's out of order.
You got, got to watch what you say.
He's out of order, his, I didn't say, there was no personal attack, and there was nothing about.
Yes, you brought up ethnicity.
All I'm saying is I do not take kindly. Now me, you being an Armenian, me being Greek.
Stop, stop talking about ethnicity.
You should have, you should have respected not just my right as an American to come up here and speak, you should have never taken his side. That's what I'm saying. There was no insult to you. You insult your ancestors when you do something like that, taking his side, going against America, going against your own people.
Well, well, well.
So there was, no, there was a reason why he jumped so quickly.
Call him out of order if you want to, Mr. President.
Out of, he was out of order, I'm not out of order.
Kristo, your time's up. Listen, you asked three of the questions, the same three questions as Tony did, so that's the reason why you are getting the answers at the end of the public session right there.
No, I know.
If you have any other questions?
I do know I asked the same questions, but normally they don't get answered.
Yeah. Joe, you want, yeah, you want to go? Whatever, whatever, you guys.
I just have a clarifying question. So Ms. Orchid, Orchid came up here earlier, and she did not have a question, but the three others who are potentially going to come up here, or have gone up here, are answering a question. So are the questions asked consecutively, or is it just whoever just comes up there, all the questions will be answered at the end?
Any other questions? Continue, I don't want to take your time.
Okay, so, all the, all the questions will be answered at the very, very end of when everybody is finished, just for clarification, because I don't have a question, that's why I didn't want to throw off the rhythm of the, of the meeting. Okay. So, family, friends, and colleagues, first and foremost, it is wonderful to hear that Edison is taking the necessary steps to secure staff and students that are safe during this COVID-19 season. The road is tough, but Edison continues to show how strong and how united we can be. We are resilient, we are tough, and together, we can defeat COVID-19. And next, as March is Women's History Month, I would just like to recognize all the wonderful women who have made significant strides within United States history. Women, unfortunately, continue to face economic wage disparities, glass ceiling limits, and occupation departments, and second shift stereotype concerns. And I'm proud to see how far women have come, but I, I look to anticipation, I look and anticipation to see how far we can go. And to conclude, I just wanted to invite all of the great Board members, as well as our administration and staff, to the upcoming Lena Harris Foundation Scholarship and Awards Banquet. I sent an email out to everybody this evening. The banquet will be held on April 3rd, 2021, at the Pines Manor in Edison, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And during the banquet, we will acknowledge all the students who have completed the program, the students from Edison High, as well as JP Stevens. And we will also be recognizing our scholarship recipient of the Lena Harris Foundation Scholarship. So, we have some wonderful guest speakers lined up, so I hope to see you all there if you can make it. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Yeah.
Brian Rivera, Stony Road. So the first thing I want to do, I promised myself that I wanted to do a shout-out to the staff of Edison Public Schools. As an educator myself, I know this is difficult. I'm living it every day, so I understand what they're going through, and I appreciate their efforts, so I want to recognize all of them. I also want to thank Washington School staff where my child attends. They had a phenomenal event, which I let Mr. Bragan know, that it was, it was great. It helped with social-emotional learning. It was a pizza and puzzle night. You could go to the school, grab a large pie, create, grab a puzzle, sit there with your family, have a pie, put the puzzle together, but it was great, because it was in a Zoom meeting, and my child got to have a playdate, essentially, with other kids his age, and it was also, it was very positive to the community, because it allowed me as a parent, and my wife, socialize with other adults. So it was almost like a playdate for everybody, you know, and so I want to recognize Washington School, and whoever put that together, you know, kudos to you. The other thing I wanted to say, I got about a list of eight things. I also want to thank you guys for putting the vaccination, your, the way you guys put that together. I know I spoke to other administrators in other districts, and some of them are actually afraid to do this, because they're worried about the liability. So I was wondering what the liability is with, I guess this is a question to the lawyer, the liability of this, for, God forbid, you do have an employee that has an allergic reaction to this shot, what's the liability of the Board of Ed? So what is your policies and process in distributing this vaccination? But again, awesome job, you know what I mean? The other thing I'm going to say, and I'm, I'm going to ask you to revisit your budget, I really am, and it's not because of any undermining issues, but I'm listening to people complain or have issues with the HVAC system. We got $12 million. Fix it! You know, you know what I mean? I understand that we, you know, we want to do the right thing and give it back to taxpayers, but we just complained that we haven't got the right amount of money in years. So finally, we get the money, and what do we want to do? Give it back. No, fix the HVACs, provide PPE, that's appropriate, because I'm still hearing the complaints. Just think about it. At the end, it's your decision, you know, you were all voted in, I respect your decisions, it's not an easy thing. I'm just saying, a second time, just consider it. It doesn't have to be 12 million. Give them six, give them something. Everybody's happy, I'm happy when I get change back. So just, just think about it. Number five, so I was looking at the agenda, and the waiver of the testing, I pray to God you guys get it, I pray to God we get it. The one thing I always hear, I always hear about programs here in Edison, but I never hear anything about the bilingual population. I never hear anything about it, because I know we do have access testing coming up, too. And if anyone knows anything about access testing, you know, when you're dealing with the younger grades, especially kindergarten, it's a one-on-one test. So the teacher's right here with the kid, watching the kid speak. So, what are the considerations with access testing? Like, I haven't seen, even seen it here. I know, and access testing's coming up with, you say, ESA testing, and then also the NJ SLA, you know, that's all coming all at once. So it's, you know, God bless you, Dr. Bragan, you know, try and organize all that, it's going to be a difficult task, but I want everyone to know, this is going to be a difficult task. And I hope the Board of Ed is aware of that, and, and I hope, you know, you get what you need done. The other thing I want to talk about is just sitting here and listening, I'm not one to play politician, or, but I sit here and I giggle, and I'm watching people's facial expressions during the meetings. I'm watching people looking down on their cellphones, not paying attention to speakers, but I just witnessed this whole fiasco with you, Ms. Conway, of asking a question. I know, in my job, if I have a committee, and I ask this committee to meet, and we come up with a decision, and then we leave, and then I find out one individual decided to make the decision, you know, to me, it's almost like tyranny, or a tyrant. It shouldn't be one person making a decision, it should be the committee. So I'm, or don't even have the committee at all. Like, I don't get it. So I was just curious with the process of how you guys are decision-making, because I think that's important for the public to know, because I'm, you know, that was very interesting, like, I don't, I don't even know what to say about it. And the other thing I wanted to say is I want to recognize Dr. Bragan for recognizing Autism Awareness Month. You know, that's very important. So I do want to say thank you for recognizing, you know, the staff that works with our, with our students, and recognizing the parents that do appreciate the work you're doing with their children. So I wanted to say thank you. But that's all I have for today, but I do want to say, you know, thank you for your efforts. You know, I know it's not an easy job, I know it's a thankless job, and welcome to the team.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Yes.
I go to my pocket and I take it with me. Beth Talke, Midwood Avenue. I have been a lifelong resident of Edison, graduate of these schools. My three children have been a graduate of these schools. I am a taxpayer, and I'm also a paraprofessional who loves her job. I do have some current concerns, as do some of my colleagues, with us going to the five-day schedule in person, only because when we started school in September, the numbers were a lot lower than what they are right now in our town as it is. Even today, there's 44 cases, 44 per 100,000 is a lot. On the news this morning, Good Morning America, they said how New York and New Jersey, the numbers are significantly growing again with all these variants. Also, before I forget, I'm nervous being up here, I don't like speaking here, I do want to applaud Virginia, you, Dr. Bragan, and you, Mr. Patel, for securing the vaccines for us. Yes, we appreciate it. I know the narrative is on, you know, the vaccines, but by the time we all get them, we will still be back in school, and we're still going to have people who aren't vaccinated. I am concerned, because the numbers of COVID cases and quarantines in schools since we've been back has significantly risen over the last week. I'm also asking once again if you can explain why we are only updating our websites once a week as to the COVID cases and the quarantine cases, when surrounding districts do it concurrently more early on a daily basis? The superintendents are calling out, putting out, like, those Connect Ed calls to the parents, letting them know, even specific schools, what the numbers are. If we are more transparent with that, and we show it from school to school, quarantines, and the number of positive cases, parents can make a more informed decision on sending their children back on, you know, April 19th. I also would like to know, and I know you're still working on it, as you've said, about what these schedules will look like on a preschool level, an elementary level, a middle school level, and a high school level. You said we'd be serving lunches when we were in-person five days a week, kids were also getting breakfast. Are we making accommodations for that in school as well? That's a concern. Where are these children going to eat? If it's a rainy day in a rainy May, where are we going to go? Where are the staff going to go? What provisions are going to be made for them, for social distancing and eating, break times, so forth? How are you going to work out, like the paraprofessionals who have to get their 20-minute breaks? Who's going to be covering them, because, you know, the manpower isn't there, we don't really have as many substitutes as we've had? What's going to happen with substitutes? We're coming to the, you know, warmer months, when teachers are going to be out, when staff members, because there might be graduations and so forth for their student. Who's going to be covering those classes? Also concerned, once again, about the air conditions in our school. We did not open until October 19th, when it got cooler because of the air conditions in our school. But now, that the numbers are higher in town, we're coming to those warm months again, what has changed? What has changed? What have we done since September to now that all of a sudden it's going to be okay? When we were, you know, that was one of the reasons why we didn't open till October. I'm also concerned about the screen time that these kids are going to be in, especially even in like self-contained, LLD classes and so forth across the board, you know, to keep those kids on it and engaged for that long. I do understand the narrative has changed since the vaccine has come out. Yes, the vaccine's there, yes, it will help us, but the scientific numbers that are put out by the county, by the state, still say that we are in troubling times. Is it prudent for us to go and try to like put everybody like all in all day? Also, in the heat, to expect these kids to be wearing masks, the young ones that are struggling with wearing them for the three, three and a half hours? I've noticed some board members tonight, even as you're speaking, so people can understand you taking off your masks. Do you know how challenging that is for staff members to try to balance that hybrid in the classroom and now having to do it as the months get heater, hotter, excuse me, more kids in the classes and to do it? You know, I invite any one of you to come in for an entire day to sit in the classrooms and see what we do. And yes, it has been, you know, it has been challenging, but it's like also, you know, incredible what the teachers have done, but to sustain it and for these kids, it's going to be hard. I understand, you know, logistically, emotionally, this has not been ideal for our students, for our staff, for anybody in the community, anybody in the world right now. But, you know, all of a sudden, just because the vaccine came out, the virus did not go away. People are still getting sick, people are still dying. I'm sure everybody sitting in this room has experienced it or knows of somebody who's passed away from it. You know, like what are we going to do? Like what also, here's another question I'd like to answer. What is the definition of a school outbreak? I do know that St. Thomas Aquinas had three cases, positive cases within a week. They were shut down for two weeks. What's happening in our schools? Because some schools already have been more than that within a week and there's been no, you know, shutdown. Let me see if I've hit all my kind of questions. I'm out of time. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments?
Dr. Bregan, you want to address these first?
These are just these ones, eh?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Regarding to coming back, you know, it's not an easy decision for anyone, we recognize that. And weighing all factors together, we want to try to do what's best for our staff and as well as our students. And we're committed to continuing to do that. As I said at the last board meeting, I'm a teacher. At heart, I'm a teacher. I'm a lead teacher, but I'm a teacher. And I won't ask anybody to do anything that I wouldn't do and that I do do. So I can respect it and I value all of you for what you do. Every person is a key part of the organization and plays a key role, from our bus drivers, custodians, nurses, administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, and everyone and anyone in between that I may have forgot. So we do value all of you and we are not, we don't want to put anyone in harm's way. We want to try to balance the safety of all people and still provide the programs that we believe we need for our children. Regarding some of the specific questions, as far as the weekly updates, we do put that on the website and we're going to continue to do that. Listing people by school and individual schools as far as the number of cases and is the number of people quarantined, I guess we could look into doing that, but I don't really see the value in that and here's why. If you're in that school, whether you're a community member, a parent or a student or a staff member, you're notified of every case and every exposure. So there's nothing to worry about. And if I work at Benjamin Franklin Elementary School, I know exactly how many people have tested positive, how many close contacts I've had, and how many quarantines have taken place. Well, it might be novel to know what's going on at James Madison. It's not germane to what I do. So I don't really see the point in that. I know other people do it. Other people do a lot of things. But at the end of the day, when I look at my paycheck, it says the Edison Public Schools. So that's the ones that I care about. As far as schedules and breaks and coverage for parents, for teachers, we'll work all that out as we always have. And contractually, if you're entitled to a 20-minute break, a 40-minute lunch, a 35-minute, 40-minute duty-free prep, you will get that. I guarantee it. What we've always done and what I will never ask any staff member to do is to work outside their contract. And I know if I did, I'd get a grievance. But we don't do that. Our administrators don't do that and we don't do that. And we will provide all the supports, the breaks, the lunches, everything that's contractually obligated to all of our employees. Regarding the warmer months in May and June, we may have warm days, you know? I can't predict that, but I do know where trends go. And where it's been trending in recent years? September is warmer than June. September is warmer than May. So we made the decision at the end of August, for the heat, we were concerned, would everybody wear a mask? It may be too warm for people to be comfortable in the classrooms. If that happens in the later months, we'll have to deal with it. We get struck with a heat wave, we'll deal with it as we normally do. But I can't predict that. Trying to think if I got all the questions here. The definition of a school outbreak? Now, people say that, well, Dr. Bregan, is it one student? Is it two student, students? Is it three? Is it four? There's not a number. People want a number. Oh, there were two positive cases, we need to close the schools. That's not what the CDC says, that's not what the Department of Health from New Jersey says, that's not what the Department of Education says. What it says is to do each case, each school individually, work with your Department of Health and decide if it's a community and school outbreak. And if it is, we close the school as we did in the fall, as we will continue to do. So this perception that we're not being transparent is simply false and perpetuated by people that are saying things like, oh, we don't know what's going on in this school and that school. It's not true. Every school, every staff member is notified of a positive case, a close contact, and the number of people quarantined. To say otherwise is simply not, simply not true. I think I answered all those questions.
Breakfast?
Breakfast and lunch will be served as they normally were. Now, how do we do that to accommodate social distancing and those parameters? We're going to work out those logistics, but we will. We will make sure that happens in a safe environment and provide those foods for our students who are the most needy and who need them. Maybe that means they take the breakfast home at the end of the day as we were doing at some point, they eat it before they come into school. I don't know that specific to preschool, to elementary, to kindergarten and to the upper grades, but we'll work out those logistics. I don't have that definitive answer exactly what that'll look like today.
And there was a question about this bilingual. I think our school, we have this bilingual program.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, Nirav Lad is our coordinator or supervisor in that area. He's been planning this for months. He actually asked me a few weeks ago, might even been a month ago, I forget the date. He needed a closet to store the AccessLs test, which is for English language learners. The test is online, so I kind of joked with him. I said, you need a closet to store the online test? What is that? Well, he came to me with a cart full of yellow boxes, and you know the yellow boxes is the access test. I don't know, had to be dozens of boxes on this cart, pushing it down the hallway. He was going to store them in my office as a joke. I share that with you because even with the online tests and these materials, I guess that you have to process, I've not done the access tests, I've done the other ones. But nonetheless, we're prepared, we're planning for it. And as I said, I think Mrs. Madigal asked earlier, are we preparing for the NJSLA test? We are. If there's a waiver, okay, that's great, you know, we're prepared, but if they go through, we'll be ready for that too. So we are prepared for it and we're ready for it. And our supervisor, Nirav Lad, is doing a great job in preparation.
Okay, thank you. All right, John, a couple of questions for you.
You want me to answer the question?
Yeah. Did I ask you that thing? And also, there's a liability question about vaccines.
Which one?
The liability, we ask the, we're giving vaccines to the staff. There was a liability question from...
Reactions from...
The federal government has immunized everybody for giving vaccines. For giving vaccines. There's no liability for giving the vaccine. Every public entity has immunity for that to begin with, but they also have it as a result of the process of the COVID vaccine rollout. It was in the, it was in the, it was in like, it was in the bill when they passed the relief back, that when they did the vaccines, everybody was going to have protection.
Excuse me, no, 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 nobody can hear it.
So, so the board, the board is not going to be subjected to liability and, you know, Dr. Bregan and I will make sure that when the process goes out, if it's the board that's actually administering the vaccines, that they're protected. You know, we're part of, we're also part of an insurance fund that requires us to have all those protections in place before anything happens. So that will be addressed. You want me to answer the budget task force question?
Yes. Did I ask you the question? Yeah.
So the answer is, I'm not going to discuss a conversation that I had with one of my clients. There's a thing called the attorney-client privilege. Conversations that happen between attorneys and clients regarding legal issues are protected by law and they're privileged. You are not permitted to discuss them. If you ask me, was there a conversation about a particular topic? I'm not, I will tell you that the answer is yes, there was a conversation. I can't tell you what the substance of the conversation was. So that's the answer, that's the best answer that I'm able to give as the attorney. You know, the privilege belongs to the board and it belongs to the members of the board. So I can't violate that privilege, but that's the answer to the question regarding the task force. I will say, from a legal perspective, that the creation of a task force is the same thing as what we call advisory boards, they're the same thing. And advisory boards are just that, they're advisory, task forces are just that, their function is advisory to the Board of Education. The membership of that particular task force or advisory board may or may not be disclosed to the public. They don't have to be disclosed to the public. All right? That's up to the board as to whether or not they want to disclose who's a member of it. Candidly, any member of this board can speak to any one of their neighbors or anyone else for that matter about issues that relate to questions that they have with respect to their board duties. Can they reveal privileged information? Of course not. But can they talk about things that are public? Of course they can. The budget is a public document, right? The budget is public. So conversations about the budget are totally appropriate with outside members of the board. Do they have to be disclosed to the public in terms of if there's a task force? That's up to the board to decide whether they want to disclose it or not.
Okay.
You got to bang them, jab them down. Is there not...
No, no, no back, no back and forth.
He's answering the questions. One at a time.
Do you want me to answer the question about the public comment too? Or no?
Yeah.
All right. So there was a question about what is the process for public comment? All right, and as I was indicating before, the process, the portion of the meeting where the public speaks is called the public comment section. It's for comments, it's for questions. There's no rule that says that the board has to engage in a dialogue with anybody from the public at the time that you're speaking at the podium. And in fact, in my experience, makes for a much poorer meeting and a less civil meeting when you engage in that back and forth. So I think that the board's process, it may have been done a certain way before, was incorrect. I think the process that we're doing now is the best process because it allows, as Vice President Patel said, he said that there was multiple questions that were repeated, we're avoiding having the same questions asked and the answers repeated. So I think the process is clear. I don't think there's any issue with transparency in that process. I wrote down every question that everybody asked. And, you know, candidly, as a final note, I'm just going to state that I'm offended by the comments regarding my ethnicity and I think that the person that made them should really spend a little time thinking about the comments that he makes and the wasting of the time of the taxpayers of Edison that he engages in when he stands at the podium and for six minutes hems and haws and doesn't have any specific questions and says, oh, I have a few minutes left, I'm going to just sit here and think about what I want to say.
Stop, 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 stop. It's not your turn, okay? All right. So Tony, to ask you a question about the open, what is it called? Response to the return to school committee, that's last year, it's not this year, okay? That's before I became the board president. So the last year, Phil was the chair of the committee, okay?
I didn't answer that question.
All right. Yeah, you asked it. And the advisor? The advisor, okay? You can ask the other previous board president whether there were any dialogue going on there. But do I have dialogue with people? Absolutely. Do I have dialogue with a specific person you talked about? Absolutely. Okay? I had dialogue with him last year, I had dialogue with him this year. You know, he's a doctor, he owns a pharmacy, he has a lot of information about the vaccines and the testing. I did talk to him, he provided a lot of good informations. So, you know, did I, yeah, did he give advices? Yes, he did. All right? As far as the cricket committee, I don't know, you know, why you're such a, all of a sudden, the interest in there. The text message you gave me is so inappropriate, again, all right? This is, this is again, that one person could use that to go against another candidate who's running. That had nothing to do with the cricket, okay? The cricket committee is going to be decided after we have all the permits, received all the application for the permits. So as far as who they are, I don't know yet. We'll see who are the team captains that was applying for the permit. We're going to talk to the team captain, they're going to come up with a committee. That's as simple as that. All right? So that's it.
You didn't answer my question.
John, when did you send me the, when did you send the email? My turn.
You said my question.
My turn, stop. Did you, when did you send the email?
He answered three of your questions already.
I didn't, I didn't get it. Can you double check? Is that from your name or is this from, huh? Okay. All right, double check it. Okay?
Crystal, he answered three of your questions that you asked already.
No, that's not your turn. You... As far as the... I, I gave you the answer before you asked, before.
Who's on the task force?
Okay?
Who's on the task force?
There's no task force because it did not happen. The budget, the budget was not provided to us until yesterday. So there was no... I already answered your question, you just don't like the answer, so you just rebuttal.
Who are the people on the cricket committee? What are their names?
I already said. You didn't, did you pay attention? Did you pay attention to what I said?
You didn't say their names. We want to know the names of the people...
I told you, I don't even know their names yet.
Do you play cricket?
Did you pay attention to what I said? You did not pay attention to what I said, that's your problem, okay?
Crystal, the forms were given out to the cricket teams. Once they come in, then we're going to be deciding or they're, the Cricket League basically is going to decide what's going to happen with those teams. So if you don't play cricket, you wouldn't know what team is where and what grounds they had before. So those people that do play cricket, they have been playing cricket last year using BOE grounds, they're going to be having more knowledge of that. Therefore, someone from those teams will be part of that committee. If you don't play cricket, you're not going to be on it. If you want to play cricket, let's go, put it on, let's go.
As far as the revises of... Hey, hey, my turn, okay? Revisit budget, I re-echo what I said, okay? We cannot make decisions for 100,000 residents. If the resident felt that they want to contribute to the school, write a check after July 1st to the school board. All right? So that's it. Yes. Yeah, can you sit in the front? So... 10:30?
Beth Talke, Midwood Avenue. Jerry, I heard the comment, yes, why am I sitting all the way in the back? Because I personally don't feel that comfortable by all these people. I feel more comfortable in the back because I'm away from people.
Okay, thank you.
Mister, I'm not sure how to pronounce your name.
Shedanian.
Shedanian. You've been here two months. I've been coming to these meetings for over 17 years, probably close to 20 minutes. 20 years, not minutes. As you get older, it does feel like 20 minutes, but it's been 20 years. And if their protocol has always been, person at the speaker would say what they had to say, we would get a response when we were done speaking. If things had changed, I think to alleviate some of this that happened tonight, if the rules had changed and how the meetings were being run, it should have been brought to the audience and the participants' attention. Also, I'm quite troubled by... Also, I'm quite troubled by what I've been seeing at this meeting tonight. I do know from the bylaws, from the New Jersey, you know, State Board Association, as well as our bylaws for the Edison Board of Ed members. It says every participant in the meeting should be treated equally and fairly. The talk that I have seen going between board members tonight has not been, it hasn't been right, it hasn't been fair. The talking back to members of the audience has also not been fair and kind. Okay? We're trying to teach that to our students, we're trying to be a kinder, I don't know, community, and I'm just, I don't even know what to say because I'm so troubled by it all. Everybody has different opinions. We all come from different places. We should respect what people say and how they say it, instead of it seems like personal attacks going back and forth. We can do better, we should do better, we are community. We're all in here for the betterment of our kids. You know, it's got to stop. I don't even know what to say, I'm speechless. But come on, guys, let's do better. There's rules put in place, there's Robert's Rules, there's our bylaws. Treat everybody fairly and respectfully. It didn't happen at the last meeting, and I see it happening again, and I hate to see us going down that road. Please, I implore all of you, respect one another. You are a group of nine that we all voted for. Everybody's voice up there is just as important, it's just not one person. Work together and please do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jerry, you want me to respond to, I wanted to respond to the one, there's just one comment that she made. I think it's Ms. Talke, is that how you pronounce your last name? Talke?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to respond to say that at the last meeting, the board president did announce that the rules were going to change. The rules of the process, the process in terms of the conversation. It was announced at the last meeting, right before we saw it.
And it was the last meeting, because honestly, I was there, I've watched it a couple times because I was still kind of taken back by what happened at the last meeting.
There's no back and forth, let him answer.
Okay.
I'm just responding to your, to your, to your comment that the rules were changing, that it wasn't announced. It was clearly announced at the last meeting that the rules were going to be, everyone was going to speak, put their questions out, and the board would respond after everyone was done.
All right, Crystal.
Crystal, out of Edison. That's why today, when we did the comments at the end, everyone got to hop in on their own questions, and I tried to hop in on my very own question. I did, I was getting shut down, and I didn't appreciate that, and I do want my questions answered when I come up here. I have the right, how I want my questions to be answered. If you don't want to answer, you don't have to, because like you said, public comments, you don't have to, you can just sit up there and not speak the whole time, which is what you should actually do, instead of... I have the First Amendment right to slander all of you because you're government officials. You don't have the First Amendment right to slander me, I'm a member of the public. So I think twice before, first of all, I didn't say anything bad about your ethnicity because Greeks and Armenians are brothers and sisters, and you know that. You're just trying to be a Democrat right now and pretend like I said something racist when nothing racist was said. All I said is Greeks and Armenians pretty much were brothers, and you should do, as a lawyer, the right thing and not take his side. So there's two different reasons you shouldn't have did that. The vaccine, right? Why are you going to promote the vaccine when you don't even know what the side effects are going to be? 75% of the population can take this vaccine, find out five years later, they just get cancer and everyone, you know? That's why, that's why the government is not, you said, they're not liable for anything. Just keep throwing them, keep giving it out. I don't care about your feelings. Oh, Dr. Bragan, good job on giving me my, sending me the first press release to Jersey. Watch the YouTube channel, you're the man. I love you, Dr. Bragan. So, yeah, back to you. Are you a Democrat? Well, in any case, I don't care about your feelings. You know I didn't say anything racist. I didn't say anything bad. I just says, hey, because you know, now we have the Greek Revolution, you know Greeks and Armenians, we were together during a genocide, during Holocausts, defended the Byzantine Empire, and you're going to sit there and pretend like I actually said something racist to you? All I said is, do your job as a lawyer. You took an oath, okay, to the American Constitution. You follow that, the American Constitution, and it's disrespectful to your ancestors if you were, while I'm doing the right thing, slander me, talk bad to me, talk down to me. You did it at the last meeting, I don't appreciate that, and I'm not going to tolerate that, and I'm going to give you the lawyer Northgrave treatment. I've been getting soft on Northgrave, but that's why I came to today's meeting, because I knew you were going to pull some Northgrave stuff. God bless America. If I want to filibuster for my time, I can actually filibuster. There's nothing in the Open Public Meetings Act and Sunshine Law that says I can't filibuster. You're just going to use any excuse to talk down to a member of the public, try to shame a member of the public. You work for me, I don't work for you. Jerry, if he keeps the [BLEEP] up, you better fire him.
Watch him out. Time it up.
Roseman versus Revere, okay. Well, it's Rosenfeld versus New Jersey, I can curse.
Your own human.
Tony Pescual to Pine Street.
Are we having more rebuttals? If we are, then let me know how long it's going to be here.
Three minutes, that's it. This is it. This is the end of it.
So I just want to read from the bylaws of the Board of Education. It's talking about the process of people coming up and doing a couple of public comments. It says, "Any responses shall be provided upon the completion of the participants' comments or expiration of participants' speaking times, unless otherwise determined by the presiding officer." So last week, okay, yes, that was said, but what was not said was, for meetings from now on, this is what the process is going to be. So how am I supposed to know? Because this says he can change it whenever he wants, anytime. So how am I supposed to know at what meeting is the process going to be? Okay? So that's the confusion that's created here. If he said this last week, he didn't say, well, every meeting after this is going to be this process. So now next week, he can change the process, and we have no idea what's going to happen. So at each meeting, maybe this process need, or whatever process, needs to be told to the residents so we know what the process is. Okay? Second thing, Mr. Shi, as far as what the cricket, why I'm so involved in the cricket stuff? Okay, I have residents call me about a lot of topics, okay? Whatever you think about me, I don't really care, okay? But I care about what residents need and their help, and I don't have to be a board member, okay, to help people and be involved and get things done. Okay? So to answer your question, why? Because I had multiple calls from people I know who were confused about the whole cricket situation, okay? And there was a meeting possibly that was going to happen last Saturday that involved some politicians also, which I don't know still to this day why they were involved at a cricket meeting that was going to involve the Board of Education land. Okay? So I don't know what's going on, but I am telling you, okay, I'm going to be coming to these board meetings as I have in the past, and I will be addressing things because residents come to me, and I will address those things. I don't need to address issues that I just have, okay? Because I don't do that just for me. You think I stand up here and just do it for my own pleasure? I could be home doing nothing else, okay? I could be sit home relaxing. But I care about what happens out in this town. So I bring these issues to the board, and I will continue to do that. So that is the reason why I brought up the cricket issue. I have nothing to do with the cricket stuff, but when residents ask me about what's going on, or can I find out, I will do that. Because that's what I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes. Did you, did you come, is this the second or third time?
How many rebuttals are we going to have, President?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
So, Dr. Bragan, this is going to direct it to you. I'm just curious, can you talk to me about your budget process? Who puts the budget together? I'm guessing it's central administration? You're choosing programmings?
Any other questions? Yeah, just, all your questions, they will answer.
So at the end, the central administration, you're putting a budget together which you feel is fit for the running of the school district, and you're making that recommendation to the Board of Ed, which is a preliminary document, which you can adjust at any time you want to meet the needs of the district. Because it's preliminary, it's a working budget. So again, I'm going to say, please, take time and look, if you have this additional $12 million, you might want to spend some, somewhere else and give some relief to taxpayers. That's all I'm saying. If anybody does budgeting, it's preliminary, it's a working document. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Board President, can I put a motion to...
Can I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion.
Second? Second, to close public comments? No, second? All right. Carol. All right, so, Dr. Bragan, you want to talk about the process of the budget?
Yeah, briefly. We started the budget process in December, where we meet with all the buildings and departments, and, you know, basically determine what their projected needs are regarding enrollment, and whether it's staffing needs or supply needs and things like that, again, by school, and then by department, as well as capital. We put all that together, we meet as a central office, we come up with some ideas on what we think that should be for next year. And then we bring that to the Finance and Facility Committee meeting, which we did about a week ago, I think that was, the final. We've had conversations about the budget prior to that, and other finance and facility meetings, just general ideas and what we want to look for. And then at that meeting, as we did today, we present the preliminary budget. As you said, Brian, this is submitted to the state DOE, and then we do have time, if there's a, the board chooses to adopt anything, until the final budget hearing, I believe, is scheduled for May. I'm not sure the exact date is when we typically do.
First week, I think.
Yeah. So that's basically the process in a nutshell. I mean, I summarize something that takes a long time and a lot of effort, and I think I said at the very beginning, before we had Greg Brenning working regularly with us as the interim, a lot of that work fell on my shoulders, and Ann Glucks, our assistant BA.